Good evening. Before we call this meeting to order, we've got a proclamation that the mayor wants to handle. Mayor?
Mr. President, thank you. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for being here. I ask battalion chief Anastasia and his family to come up and all the firefighters that are here tonight to honor him as well, if y'all would like to come up as well. Maybe not. Y'all come on. Well, it's a tough day for -- is this on? Can everyone hear me?
I don't think it's on, Mayor.
I don't either.
Oh, is it?
Saying it's on.
Sorry.
We're on.
I'm 65 hearing.
So, a tough day because we've got a great guy that's retiring, and we want to honor Mike and his family for the years of service that dedicated to Homewood. So, I'd like to read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas Battalion Chief Mike Anastasia has dedicated over 36 years to a career in fire service with the City of Homewood Fire and Rescue Department and is now retiring. And whereas Mike began his fire service career with the City of Homewood as a firefighter, paramedic, and has advanced through the ranks of lieutenant, captain, and lastly battalion chief. And whereas Mike has worked tirelessly throughout his career to provide the very best level of service to the Homewood Fire and Rescue Department and to the citizens of Homewood. And whereas Mike has contributed leadership skills and set new standards of excellence in virtually every aspect of the Homewood Fire and Rescue Service, including vehicle maintenance and purchases, equipment maintenance and purchases, radio communications, and technological advancements through many changes over the past 20 years, firefighter hiring, training, supervision, and promotions, shift command responsibilities, application and acquisition of various fire service grants, liaison with various departments and agencies inside and outside the City of Homewood, and AMAS, Alabama Mutual Aid Society, probably pronounced A-M-A-S, maintenance and deployment coordinator, only to name a few of the projects in which he's been involved. And whereas Mike, through his personal work ethic and professional leadership skills, has helped establish and maintain the Homewood Fire and Rescue Department as a premier department in the delivery of fire and rescue services in all their forms. So now therefore I, Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the City of Homewood, and on behalf of all of our citizens, hereby express my sincere appreciation and thanks to Battalion Chief Mike Anastasia for his distinguished service to this city and highly commend him for the manner in which he's carried out his duties and responsibilities. And Mike, I just want to say, on behalf of all the council, those that live here, those that work here, our city's been much better off because you've been here. We've had some great discussions over the years, and I'm going to call them discussions. But I will tell you all this, the one thing that I appreciate about Mike so much is that he always fought for the girls and guys in the fire department. It was always with respect, and it was always with passion. And Mike, folks like that's hard to replace, and mean a lot to this city. Thank you for what you've done. Thank you for sharing him with us. I'm sure you've spent sleepless nights knowing that they were out on the scene, taking care of others while you were home by yourself, and we haven't forgotten that either. So, Mike, thank you again. Appreciate you. Mike has a few words he'd like to say.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's a true honor. It wasn't expected. Y'all have done this very seldom. I know that. Again, I'd like to just thank you and tell you what an honor it is. I'd like to extend, you know, to my wife and my baby girl, she's here, and the rest of the family that all knew the sacrifices that were necessary for me to do what I truly wanted to do. It was a calling for me. There's nothing else. I don't look back and think, gee, I would have rather done something else. It's been great. And, you know, I guess I've been blessed, very blessed, to have found a place that I could get to a point that I could achieve some of the things that I wanted to in my life. I'd like to thank Chief Resident for the rank and for the support along in the years that allowed me access, and you're aware, Walter, right, a lot of access, to get the things that we needed. And I want you to know before I go what an incredible group of firefighters you have today. They're young. A lot of them are young. But you have a wealth of experience and training, dedication, perseverance, and passion. And so I'm very proud of what I see when I leave. I don't feel that I'm leaving anything in a state that's not going to be great in the near future, today and in the near future. Lastly, I'd like to recognize you guys, because as y'all know, I know that you try to manage your budget, and you have a lot of people that come to see you, but you've never denied us access, ever. It's tough at times, I know, for y'all to make those decisions, but you've made many in our favor. You've taken care of us as best you could as far as the things I was responsible for. One more thing that I got to speak of, this guy and this guy here. Before they came onboard in the positions they're in now, I don't think I ever saw the mayor, chief of staff, or councilman spend days in the field, in places where, other than us, we were your medical service. I mean, the hospitals were overloaded or under overwhelmed. There wasn't any power. There wasn't a quick way out. And was it cold and wet? Yes. So, for that, embedding with us and seeing what we do and knowing what we do, I thank y'all. And again, for me and my family, it's been great. I couldn't have done anything different. The only thing I can say is, you know, God bless y'all, and God bless the city of Homewood. Thank you.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order, and we're going to begin with an invocation, which our new finance director and acting city clerk has offered to offer the invocation. So if you'll stand, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you for everyone gathered here. We thank you that you know each of us by our name, and you've given us opportunities to know you. We know that we're dependent on you, and we trust in you in everything we do, our decisions and our thoughts. We ask that you'd come to us tonight and guide us in our hearts, minds, and souls to make the right decisions that are needed. Fill our lives with your love, fill our conversations with your grace, and fill this meeting with your presence. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Burgett, if you'll call, roll.
Mr. Gualtney.
Here.
Mr. Thames.
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Here.
Mr. Wolverton.
Here.
Mr. McCloskey.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Wyatt.
Here.
Mrs. Andrus.
Here.
Mr. Wright.
Here.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
Here. So we have a quorum. Next item of business is the reading of the minutes from the council meeting of June the 11th of this year. Chair would welcome a motion for dispensing of the reading and approval of said minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Thames, second by Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor of approval, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
And I will abstain for having not been here, and that is approved. Okay, board vacancies. My understanding is we have multiple applications for the BEZ position, so we're going to ask Robert to coordinate some, an interview time, and we will do that as soon as possible after the July 4th holiday, okay? So thank you very much for that. Are there any other appointments that I'm not aware of?
Mr. President, Ward 1 would like to nominate Rosa Hill for the Ward 1 Library Board position that's open.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Gualtney, a second from Mr. Thames. Any questions or further comments? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous. And if, Mr. Gualtney, if you'll let her know, that would be a good thing, all right? Any other? Yes?
Just a couple of questions. Can we get an updated list of everyone who's serving on a board? That would be helpful to me, just to kind of see that. And what do we do with the beautification board? Is that appointed?
Yeah, we had our, yeah, we started meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, did we have any more openings? I just had a constituent that was interested in participating, and I didn't know what the process was to...
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. You want to send any information?
I'll provide you the information.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Good.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. I think that's a good recommendation. We do need an update, so thank you for that. All right, let's move on. We have, as it stands now, three items to add to the agenda, so let me share them with you. The first two are committee referral, 330618, request for consideration of Central Avenue crosswalks, requested by Mr. Thames, and this will go to the Public Safety Committee. 340618, which is a request for consideration of Historic Preservation Commission issues, requested by Brittany Crean. Am I pronouncing that right?
Crean.
Crean, okay. Thank you. And Barry Smith, and this would go to Planning and Development, Mr. Thames. And the third item would be new business, and this is 350618, which is a request for consideration for working in the city right of way at Homewood Preserve for proposed Eagle Scout project, requested by Wyatt Pugh. So, those are the three items. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
Seven.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Smith. Any further discussion? If there is not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. All right, there is no consent agenda item, so we're going to move on to old business agenda. We're going to start with 290518, which is a request for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 285 Palisades Boulevard, requested by Greg Cobb, our in BEZ. Report from special issues. Sir.
So, yes, that's okay. So this was from our June 4th meeting, and we were actually here at our last meeting on June 11th discussing it, and then there were some issues that came up, so we carried over the public hearing, and we are now here to address the continuation of that public hearing.
Okay.
We voted it out without a recommendation pending the public hearing.
All right, so the public hearing was left open, Mr. Wright?
Is that what we did?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
I've got two yeses and a no, so excuse me all. Mr. Kendrick, what did we do?
I don't know.
Oh, no.
Yeah, in the, I thought I read in the minutes that we closed the public hearing, and we were just carrying it over for any questions by the council. That's what I remember.
Okay.
But weren't we, I believe they were going out to look at the amount of right of way, and was it that part of the process, was going out there and trying to figure out?
No, the question was...
No, no, it was the sign.
The question that came up during the meeting that I recall was the fact that the land falls away, falls down off Oxmoor Road.
Right.
And it was a matter of being able to see the sign, whether it's on the ground, which was, he had it in the wagon.
Right, exactly.
And...
That's...
And Buddy Wade had it on the sign, too.
Yes, that's right. It was because that is taking up his ability to do a sign on the building itself.
Right. That's correct. And the question was, did we have a permit on the Buddy Wade sign? And we do not. I wanted to, I'll address that with Ms. Wade.
Okay.
I've actually have addressed it.
Since I was not here and I abstained on the minutes, I am going to go with Mr. Jones, and with all due respect to everyone else, and...
He clearly read the minutes.
So therefore, the public hearing is no more, but Q and A, now, let's get to that. Go.
Okay, well, I do have a question. Now that we know that there's not a permit for the Buddy Wade building sign that's on the building, would that be an option if that were to be removed, or what is the theory behind that?
I talked to Ms. Wade about that briefly last week. She would like to leave the sign on the building, and we'll have to measure it, see how big it is, see whether it needs a variance, because there isn't one sign allowed. But she wanted to leave that on her buddy.
Okay.
So...
Well, we don't have, we don't have all the facts tonight, do we?
Well, we know that there's a wagon out there and a sign. That's really, the question is, can, if he puts it in the wagon, he needs a variance for size, and height also, probably. Right now, sitting on the ground, he could locate it anywhere on the property on the ground, and he would not need any type of variance.
Okay, we're going to treat, first, we're going to treat the Buddy Wade building sign as a separate issue, and we look forward to a report from you, okay?
Okay. The report I'm going to give you on that is, Ms. Wade really does not want to remove that sign.
No, I understand that, but I'm talking about the measurements as to whether we go further with that or not. Does that make sense, Mr. Kendrick?
Well, there's nothing to go forward with, because it's there, and she doesn't want to take it down, and it's...
She has to get a variance.
Yeah, she'd have to cut back.
You'll have to get a variance. That's what I'm saying.
But that doesn't affect this situation.
But this doesn't affect this situation, so next.
Well, here's the deal. If that sign, the Buddy Wade sign isn't within our size limitations, and it may be, it's going to be close, then she, all she needs is a permit. If it's bigger than that, she will need a variance. That's separate from his sign, because he's allowed one on the building and one on the ground. So he can leave it on the ground, no variance. He puts it in a wagon, variance.
And you won't?
Is that clear, is mud?
That's because, that's, just to clarify, that's because putting it on the wagon counts as height and...
Height and width, yes, sir. The wagon becomes part of the sign, and it makes it too tall and too wide, and so...
And I assume you want it on the wagon.
But it can sit anywhere else, too, on the ground.
So it being on the wagon gives me more exposure above the ground, and it's just a great landmark for me. And it's a more affordable option than installing the sign.
So, any other questions? If there are not, and we are at that point, is there someone willing to make a motion?
Well, okay, one more question.
Go, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President, okay, so as it sits, pardon the pun, on the ground now, what would be the variance requested? What would be the...
None.
There's no variance.
Okay. I thought you, in the last meeting, you said because it was up on the lot...
Oh, well, he's got to fix the bottom of it. He would have to comply. And that sign, if he'll fix the bottom of it to where it's solid to the ground, he's good. But it could be anywhere on the lot.
Okay, well, if he kept it as is...
Oh, no, no, he can't keep it as is. No, sir.
Are you asking for clarification, Mr. Jones?
Well, if you do it like it is, it creates a pole sign, and we don't allow pole signs. He's got to have it solid to the bottom, to the ground.
Okay.
Is there any question for putting it on the wagon?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, sir. That's really all the question is, is we've agreed that if he stays on the ground, he'll make it compliant. If you give him a variance, put it in the wagon, or go back in the wagon. So that's your question, wagon or no wagon?
Thank you.
Preferably wagon.
Yes, my preference was not the wagon. Well, that's all the questions I have. I thought there was a medium ground here, but obviously not.
No, I don't think so. So the chair would welcome a motion?
I would make said motion for approval of the sign variance at 285 Palisades.
Mr. Gualtney has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Thames. All in favor of said motion, signified by saying aye. All opposed?
Say nay.
Say nay.
Nay.
Okay, then he'll stay on the ground, and he'll make it compliant with our regulations.
Absolutely.
Anywhere you want on the lot.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to 080418, request of public hearing set for tonight before consideration of reduction of speed bumps on Berry Road, requested by Patrick McCloskey. Do we have a report from Public Safety? I think you, Mr. Thames, sorry.
Did I cover that? I don't have the minutes.
Who covered that meeting?
Patrick was here.
Well, I understand, but...
I'll be happy to read this.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Even though I'm not on the committee, but I do have a...
A vested interest.
No, no, Mr. McCloskey asked me to read something, which I will, but the action for the committee was a three to zero vote to recommend using law enforcement to reduce speed, moved by Mrs. Andrus and second by Mr. Wolverton. So, that was the, that's the recommendation out of Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
As I recall, I don't think that clearly states what our intention...
I didn't think so either.
Okay, so are you on the, you're on the committees?
I am on the committee.
So would you share what you thought?
As I recall, I think we wanted to have a conversation with police about if we were to remove the speed bumps, how many to remove, which ones to remove, and I think have them do some targeted enforcement in the meantime to kind of see what kind of results we had as far as warnings, tickets, current speeds, things like that. So we had a baseline for how fast are people going now? What can we expect them to do with a reduction of speed bumps?
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to open this public hearing since it was set, and are there any individuals in the public who would like to speak on this particular issue?
I'm Ted Knight.
Please come forward. We need you first to sign in with your name and your address, and then when you complete that, please come to the podium where we can... We're very interested in hearing what anyone has to say on this subject.
I'm Ted Knight. I've lived at 1220 Forest Brook Circle for over 50 years, and recently they resurfaced Berry Road out of Forest Brook both ways to Alfred and to Green Springs. And I know there's still two there, which, you know, it's okay. I don't have any opposition to any of them, other than I would like to see that they don't put, as that they not reinstall the speed humps on Berry Road.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Knight. We appreciate it. Thank you for your opinion. And again, anyone else who would like to speak to this item, please sign in, so to speak, first. And the next person needs to bring the microphone a little bit closer to them.
Yeah, hi. Good evening. I'm Tiffany Sides, a resident at 1604 Shades Glen Circle and the Forest Brook subdivision as well. And I would just like to reiterate, to recommend, to remove all the speed bumps. We've lived there several years. My husband's actually a lifelong resident of Forest Brook, and just quite honestly, they're just annoying. It's great since they've repurposed Berry Road, and with just the two speed bumps has been very, very nice. So it would be wonderful as a Homewood resident and resident of Forest Brook just to totally get rid of those. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Laurel Bassett. I live at 1400 Berry Road. And I'll be honest, I thought they were kind of annoying, too, until they took them out. And we're at the very end, and once people pass that stop sign, they start flying. We have little kids, we have a lot of visitors, and they all feel like it's dangerous to even pull into our driveway, because people are tailing them so closely, let alone pull out of our driveway. I saw a motorcycle one day pass four cars on my end of the road. Once they get past that stop sign, they just think they're home free. So, you know, I'm sorry that it's annoying to other people to have them there, but it's dangerous for the rest of us to not have them there, because it's such a cut through. And the fact that they were there, and now they're just some at one end, makes the other end apparently that much more of an invitation to just fly, to the point that I think it's really dangerous.
Ma'am, one question. Since you are a resident of Berry Road, are, do the two speed bumps help this at all?
I don't think they help my end. In fact, I think they make it worse, because I think people slow down, and maybe they're annoyed, I don't know. So they just fly on our end. And so I feel like if they were maybe more evenly distributed, I'm not sure what the solution is. I just know that once there haven't been any on our end of the road, and there's no speed limit sign or anything, and we haven't seen targeted enforcement, it's just extremely dangerous. I mean, our kids and their guests go out in the front yard and yell, "Slow down, slow down," because, I mean, the wind just from the cars is that strong that even four-year-olds notice that it's, it's just out of the norm for them playing in other people's yards in Homewood. There's something that's not safe.
All right, thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm David Crawford. This is exciting. I didn't plan on coming here today, so...
Okay.
And I know Andy from a long time ago.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. I knew him in college, and this hasn't surprised me that he's on another council, so he's a good guy. Anyway, I live in Forest Brook. I'm on Forest Ridge Road, and I've lived there about six years, and I hate those speed bumps with a passion. I hate them. I don't want to, I was okay when they took them all away. I loved it. I understand that people are concerned about speed. I'm okay with keeping the two if we don't have to, I don't, there was five, I think, before on one side, and I think two on the other, maybe four, whatever. It kills your car, and I know a lot of roads that are, roads where people take through shortcuts and everything where people speed through, but I don't know any roads with speed bumps. I can think of a number of towns that have these people with issues. I want safety, of course, but the speed bumps, they destroy your car, and the number we had before was insane. I also don't want to take all the speed bumps away and have a bunch of cops there ready to give me a $130 ticket if I go over the speed limit, but I'm not driving wild, I don't want y'all. But anyway, I'm in favor of keeping the speed bumps as they are or reducing them, but please don't add any more. They're just very, just very annoying.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ken Sabasky. I live at 1561 Berry Road, and I'm here to ask that the speed bumps be put back the way they were. I have here a letter dated February 1999, written from the then-city engineer and zoning administrator of the City of Homewood, clearly recommending that value had been obtained from the speed bumps. I have copies for the council members, if you want them, but there was a study done after the speed bumps had been installed to demonstrate that the speeds were reduced... But there was a study done after the speed bumps had been installed to demonstrate that the speeds were reduced, that the number of accidents were reduced, and that it actually improved safety on that road. I don't know what's changed, other than the quality of cars, suspensions and things like that, to allow people to go over bumps and not have it damage their cars as much as it might have done in 1999. But since 1994, this is the third or fourth time that the city has actually had this conversation. And I think this is the only document that exists where a member of the city government recommended that the speed bumps be left in place with data compelling for why it should be because it actually did reduce accidents and reduce speeds. So my recommendation would be that you put the speed bumps back in place.
Thank you, sir.
Do you want copies of these?
Sure.
Who should I give them to?
Me.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Angel Torres. I am a resident of 1547 Berry Road. We have a clear, big window view of the street. And we saw when they repaved the road, the facts, we can see it where the speeds have actually increased significantly. We've seen cars in there that must have been going at least 60 miles per hour. I'm not a big fan... Yeah, 60, at least. I'm not a big fan of the speed bumps. We've been there for 10 years. I haven't had to replace my shock absorbers yet. Probably we have to before long, but I believe that the benefit of being able to reduce the speed outweighs the inconvenience or whatever it might do to the car. Again, I am biased because I live on the road, but I also get to see firsthand. It's a narrow road with a lot of curves. It's really hard to pull out of the driveway now with cars flying. By the time I come in, there is cars that were basically right upon us. We haven't had an accident, but it's something that could happen. We have a lot of people that ride bikes on that road and people that jog and walk. We don't have any sidewalks, and it's a narrow road. So again, my recommendation would be that we put the speed bumps back on. There used to be four between Green Springs and the stop sign, there used to be four. There are two right now. And then after the stop sign, all the way to Alfred Avenue, there were three more. And if there were to be a consideration where the three that go after the stop sign get reduced to two and perhaps between Green Springs and the stop sign having three instead of four, or whatever recommendation might be on that side, but we clearly need the speed bumps. And the fact that we only have now two shows in evidence that the speeds have increased. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
I'm Kristin Torres. I also live at 1547 Berry Road. To me, I guess the summation would be this is a conversation about inconvenience versus safety. And I beg for you to consider safety first. Yes, they're inconvenient for us as well, but we're great with a few bumps along the road because we have a healthy child. We do spend a lot of time outside. We also host a lot of groups from our church. I'm on staff at Dawson. We're very affiliated with Sanford as well and have a lot of people in and out. And lately, we are recommending no one to back out of our driveway because you cannot see, if you're in our house, we should have brought a picture, but you cannot see what is around the corner either way. And our sweet neighbor across the street, who couldn't be here, who has replaced four mailboxes prior to the speed bumps, her husband had chemo treatment today, but she would be here, and so asked me to speak on their behalf. But she just said that she was going to bring me something back across the street, and she waited a day because so many cars were going so fast. So anyways, thank you. Safety versus inconvenience.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yes, sir. You did sign in? Okay, good. Your name is?
My name is Jake Colada, and I live on 1543 Berry Road. And I primarily have been talking since this issue came up, I guess at the Public Safety meeting. I actually read about it in the Homewood Star, I guess. So I called Patrick, and I've been communicating with Patrick about it. And his recollection, I think, of the conversation was that you all were going to discuss the possibility of reducing the speed humps. Well, let me say first that I hate it that it's a situation where it's Forest Brook people against Berry Road people. And that's what it... And that's the way it's been for quite a while. But basically, I've been living on the road. I lived on the road prior to the speed humps. And we had a speed issue, and we tried very hard to do something about it. At some point, we... It got so bad that we made the decision to really push hard to figure out what could we do to slow traffic down. So we started meeting with council members, police force, et cetera. And eventually, what we did, for those people who don't remember the history, there were some people that were on the council. I think Mr. Jones was, Mr. Bischoff, I think Mr. McBrier. And so the climate, as it relates to speed humps, was very negative. So at any rate, a traffic study was done. The traffic study that was done, that was paid for by the neighborhood, by the Berry Road neighborhood. And my recollection was it was probably about $10,000. Well, after the traffic study was done, there was other metrics that the Homewood folks pulled together. And it was, you know, after all the evidence was presented, and we're talking about, we went through all kinds of hoops. You know, one issue was the fire station, the fire trucks going up Berry Road. It slows them down. And I'm giving you history, and I know it's going to bore you, but we went through all these hoops. And we convinced, I think we convinced Mr. Jones, we convinced Mr. Bischoff, we convinced obviously the majority of the council to pass an ordinance to put down the speed humps. The evidence was overwhelming, pre and post result from the speed humps. The opposition to the speed humps, primarily from the people from Forest Brook, and I have family that live in Forest Brook, so... And I have friends that live in Forest Brook. But their opposition is they're a nuisance. I spill my coffee going down the road, but nothing tangible. So I would suggest, before you change your ordinance, have the people in Forest Brook pay for a traffic study. And let's see what it says. Because my guess is, and I'd be willing to bet money, that the traffic study is going to come back with a similar result. Today, we deal with the speed humps being removed, the traffic... And I don't... I can't clock a car going by, but I can promise you, they're going... The speed limit's 25. They're probably going 50 or more. You got people texting now, so the danger is even greater than it was whenever we did this. I had a lot more hair back than that day when we did it. I knew we were in trouble when I only saw two speed humps come back on the road when y'all repaved the road. So I called Patrick to ask him, and he assured me they were all going to go back down. And I'm sure the reason we're here is that you had some people call, say, "Hey, we love the road. It's smooth." I like it too. And quite honestly, I think the speed humps are a nuisance. After we did the speed humps and that y'all approved the speed humps on Berry Road, Clermont, another road that had issues, got speed humps. You know, and I'm assuming a traffic study was done in the Forest Brook neighborhood because you've got three-way stops at every intersection between Berry Road and Ocksmore. And every time I go through there, there's never been anyone at those intersections. But I can tell you, I wouldn't make a phone call and ask you to remove them. If they think they need that to slow people down, God bless them, I'll slow down when I go through there. But I'm telling you, I've lived there before, and I've lived there since we had them. And the speed humps slowed people down. Where they worked exactly the way the traffic engineer said they would. Now, he made other recommendations. He made recommendations for turnarounds at various places. But what we got approved has worked, and it's worked perfectly. Well, maybe not perfectly, but it's worked enough. And it made all of us feel safer. It was a long process. We didn't just come up here and say to you all, "Hey, we need speed humps." The Forest Brook people want you to take them down because they don't like them. I get that. But I'm telling you, if we're serious about what we're doing and we care about public safety, you've got an ordinance on the books, and I don't know how all this works, but you've got an ordinance on the books. The reason that ordinance got passed is because you had a traffic study done, paid for by the neighborhood. So the way I look at it, unless something has happened and you hadn't been able to get to a fire or something's happening, those speed humps have caused a problem for somewhere other than Berry Road, then I see revisiting it. But what I heard tonight was, I hate them. They're a nuisance. Somebody has car... Is having car problems, probably needs to get a new car. I've been living on that road. I've never changed my shocks. I've had four kids. Trust me, I've been through a lot of cars. Haven't replaced my brakes any more often. But I'm telling you, it was done correctly. It was done right. We jumped through 100 hoops to get people to listen. So if you all do anything other than put them back down, I think you should have to get a traffic study that says that basically that supports the conclusion. We had a conclusion based on, and I don't have all the documents, but I'll suggest to you that have a traffic study done and see what they say.
All right, sir, forgive me. Thank you very much. I appreciate what you have to say. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Leslie Ty, 1564 Berry Road. And I don't envy you having to be where you are. But one thing that I would say, if I was sitting in your position, is that I would want to have facts before having to make a decision. And I just haven't heard anything. I've heard the history from before, you know, just from sitting here tonight. But no facts at all on why you would want to remove the speed humps, which is effectively raising the speed limit. I walk down the street all the time, but I came in here with an open mind. But I just thought maybe someone would have some compelling argument, other than, "I just don't like it. It's inconvenient. I'm late for work," or whatever. You know, there's no facts saying, making a case for effectively increasing the speed on that road. So that's what I would say to you before you do vote on this, is to think about the facts that have been presented or perhaps that you allow both sides to have the opportunity to present again before this is voted on. That's all I have.
But again, as a resident of that particular road, you feel like the speeds have certainly picked up and...
Absolutely. I walk my dog every evening. In the winter, you know, it's after dark. So now in the daylight, it's okay. I have to wear a light on my head.
Sure.
You know, people can't see me, but the cars, they come so close. It's almost like they're trying to antagonize. There's some places where, because there's not a sidewalk, depending on which side of the road I'm walking, there are just some places where there's no place for me to jump out of the way. So, you know, it's difficult. But, you know, if the data says it makes sense to allow people to drive faster on this road, then I'll go with that and I'll find another place to walk or walk on the wrong side of the road. But absolutely, the speed has definitely increased. And with the texting, it's like people... I feel like people are probably paying more attention when they know that the speed hump is coming up versus the part of the road where there are no speed humps. It just seems a little bit more reckless there. Like, and I think that's why I've had close calls, it's just because people aren't paying attention because they're not worried about their suspensions or they're spilling their coffee, you know?
I understand.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Carrie Colada. I live at 1543 Berry Road. The first time we tried to get the speed humps, we went door to door. It was right after my son was almost killed. And we have neighbors here that were outside when it happened, and I heard the screaming. I didn't know what had happened, but our dog had pulled him out in the road, and someone was going about 65. That's what the neighbors told me. So we didn't get it past that time, so we tried again. The second time, it was approved, but it was after another child was hit. He was chasing a ball. He looked both ways, but the cars are coming so fast. He chased the ball into the street. He was hit, broke his arm, and he had kidney damage. He lived. He's fine. But at that time, it was approved. And those were the two things that I wanted to mention that were not brought up by anyone else. But it is a very... It's a very dangerous road right now. And if you want to come and park in my driveway, I've got two driveways. You can see the speed of the cars, and you can see what we're talking about. I've called the police myself, I think, four different times, just because of the speeds on the road. But we really would appreciate having the speed humps put back down. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Carrie Blevins, and I live at 1577 Berry Road. Just wanted to share an observation with you. It's quite clear when I-65 is in trouble, when it's slowed down, and the traffic is obviously not moving on 65 because it all jumps onto Berry Road. You get off at Alfred Avenue, fly down Berry Road to Columbiana, and then hit Green Springs. You can always tell from Berry Road when there's trouble on 65 because of volume of traffic and the speed greatly increases. Just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? Yes, please. Oh, okay. Just, I would ask you...
I just have one additional thought. I don't understand why it makes sense on a strip of road that's a mile long about, I don't know exactly what it is, that on the first third of it, you have both a roundabout and two speed bumps, but the next two-thirds doesn't require anything. Somehow, a decision was made that the first third of it should have both a roundabout and two speed bumps to slow it down, but then, right after it, there's no need for anything. I happen to be the home right after the second speed bump, and what everybody's telling you is absolutely true. That's where the accelerator goes down, and by the time they hit the stop sign going into Forest Brook, you know, they're probably going well beyond 25 miles an hour. So it just seems peculiar and odd that something makes sense for part of a road that doesn't make sense for the rest of it. And I appreciate there could be jurisdictional issues. Homewood city boundary only goes so far, so you all can only rule on a certain amount of it, but it just is odd.
All right, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Please sign in, Mr. Phil.
My name is Jerry Phil. I live in Forest Brook. I grew up Homewood, and I've seen Berry Road. We've lived there. I don't know, Aaron was one, so he's 31 now, so I've been there 30 years. I absolutely sympathize with these people here on Berry Road. Totally understand it, and I really feel for them. And this is not to label, you know... You know, before the speed bumps, they knew what they were, you know, if they were... You know, when you buy a house, you look at where you live. That's something to be said, that's all. My kid took a mailbox out when he was 16 on Berry Road. I understand the road. It would be great if you guys could address the whole road and not just put speed bumps on it, okay? If they need a sidewalk, give them a sidewalk, okay? There's a lot to that. I mean, the... I have mixed feelings. I'm going up and down the road. It's so smooth. It's so nice now when you go up to the interstate, get on. And I'm like, I see people coming. I'm like, in my windshield doing this, okay? I see it. I slow down for the phantom speed humps. And by the way, the things that we have now are not speed humps. They're speed... I don't know. I go over in my van, and everything in the back of the van goes up in the area at 15 or 10. I figured out that if I stop and go over them, it won't come off the ground. But the ones that are there now are bad. They are dangerous because your tires will leave the road at anything above 15 miles an hour. That goes back to the hump issue versus what they put down. What they put down is wrong, okay? I understand these people, I mean, for my neighbors on Berry Road, okay? It is a tough issue, okay? Can we do it with lifts and get the same result? That would be wonderful. I think you're going to have to have them too. I think you're going to have to have them too, or you're going to have to, you know, it costs to put a police officer there all the time, and that's, you know, it's not going to work. Of course, you can train people to do anything. I've been trained to stop in front of a certain person's house that I know, because there was a speed bump there, or a speed hump there. It, you know, I actually know people who go across them at 40, because if you slow down to 25, it's a different harmonic on their car, so they go over at 40 now, and they just go up and down at 40. That doesn't slow some people down. It's not going to, you know, it's not going to deter everybody, okay? And the ones that are going over them faster are even more out of control, okay? That's when you really get in trouble. It's not an easy answer, and I hope you all give more consideration than just speed humps. They need more than that, okay? I hate them. Okay, that's just, you know. Does anybody here like speed humps? Does anybody, even the people on Berry Road, they have to drive over them too. Nobody likes them. I understand it may be necessary. Not so many, or something. Give them sidewalks, let them be safe. Of course, the people texting will still run over them, okay? That's not going to solve that problem.
They will.
I've walked up and down the road when I was actually exercising more. It's not a great road, but I mean, it's never been a great road. I mean, unless you all make some real changes to it, not putting a tree in the middle of it, okay, like you did down at the roundabout, okay? People go right through the tree and tear their car up, and everything else. I've seen that done too. It's offset to one side, so people, instead of going where it slows them down, will go over to the left. I've seen that too. There's no easy answers here, guys. This is something that really, they've spent a lot of money and did a study. And I was angry when they first put them in there. I would honk when I went over them. I mean, just something to call attention, hey, I don't like these, and I'm sorry I did it, you know? Again, I grew up around here, and you know, I feel like this is my home too, and I feel like I'm being kind of put on. Y'all put them on Roseland, you put them on the one up above Trinity up there. And they work, they slow you down, but they are tearing my brakes up. It's small consideration to keep one kid from getting hurt, I'll eat at every break I got up on my car. It's not just, I wish you could do more than just, okay, put speed humps in. I wish there was more. I realize you've had a traffic engineer study it. Maybe we can spend a little more of the city's money if you're going to do that. I mean, the roads are so smooth and so nice now, and I really, I'm doing this, I'm telling, put a sign up, say, you want speed humps back? Keeps your speed up. If you don't, slow down. You know, I don't know, maybe that would work for a while, we could try that too.
Thank you, Mr. Feld. Very quickly, sir, I mean, I'm not trying to be rude, but-
I'll be as quick as he. Okay, here's what I was going to say.
You've already-
He doesn't have to worry about our problem. The problem had been solved. We had a traffic study done, you put the speed humps down. I don't know about the roundabout, that was done much later, but the problem was solved. So, what we're doing now is turning it upside down. And again, he did honk every morning at 6 o'clock, right in front of my house. I appreciate that. But, the problem was solved. And if you look at the ordinance, it was solved.
I understand.
So, I just want you to go back to your ordinance and look at the documentation that supported it. That's all I'm asking you to do.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Again, a follow-up, please, very quickly.
So if you want to take the speed humps up, I suggest that we do stop signs, and just do eight stop signs, whatever it was. We've got to slow the traffic down, and safety is the issue. It's really not about whether we're annoyed, or if the speed limit is 15 miles an hour to go over a speed hump, which is posted by each one of them, that's the speed you're supposed to go over. And the only other thing I'll say is, we don't even have a speed limit sign on our street anymore. I don't know what happened to it, but there is no speed limit sign, except the ones that say 15 by the speed humps.
Great point, thank you. Mr. Cook, hold on, just one second, please. Mr. Cook, we don't have any speed limit signs on that street? Microphone.
I just emailed Randy Hamblin, the Streets Department, and asked him about getting streets, getting sand. I'm wondering if the speed limit signs came down when they did the repaving project, and they just didn't go back up. But we can, that's one thing we can definitely take care of. That's not a problem. We do those in-house.
Quickly. Yes, sir. Did you register? Yes, you did. Quick follow-up, please.
How could you forget this face?
I know. Quick follow-up.
I got my thoughts more together. I know I said I hated speed bumps. I'm with the families and stuff. I don't, I'm willing to compromise and have some speed bumps. Even on the other side, the gentleman was speaking about not having one on the other side. I'm okay with putting one back. I just thought there was way too many speed bumps. And speed bumps, I can give you a study right now, speed bumps reduce the speed of anything. I mean, you can put in my house, and my son will be slower. It will reduce the speed. It's just that there were so freaking many speed bumps. So how many do we need to get the result that everybody is kind of willing to compromise on, where their families are safe, people are going to still speed over stuff, and where people aren't feeling, the seven we had before, the whole road was insane.
I understand.
I've never seen that before on any road, anyway. That's, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak to this? I understand, Mr. Feld. Anyone else that wants to speak to this, who has not spoken before? If there's not, then we are going to close this public hearing. Now, comments from the council, please.
I have a question.
Ms. Andrews?
Mr. Kendrick, do you know, is the ordinance asked for seven speed humps? Is that how we landed on seven?
Yes, ma'am, the existing ordinance that you have was adopted in 1998. Just look for history. We didn't have control of that road up until a certain point, because this is Jefferson County road. So we got permission from Jefferson County to regulate, to put the speed humps. Before that time, we had no authority to put traffic control devices there. Secondly, the ordinance requires a study six months after the installation of speed humps to give a report. So that was nothing unusual. It's part of the process that we have, and wherever we put speed humps, there'll be a follow-up six months later, which I'm sure is what you're referring to by the engineer. But the existing ordinance has them in seven different locations by precise address. 1580 Berry Road, 1561, 1536, and 1508, and then 1416, 1432, and 1404. So if you want to change the numbers or locations, you would need to modify the ordinance. The ordinance currently stands, requires them to be installed at those addresses, or in that vicinity of those addresses.
Do you know that was done, just because of the distance between them?
No, ma'am, I don't recall, but it was done and is specified in the ordinance.
Okay, I have a question now, too.
Ms. Smith?
As Mr. Thames pointed out, I think there was some discussion by the committee that there needed to be some more looking at it done, before we made a decision, so that we weren't making a decision just based on opinion and not fact. So is there a way to delay the vote, so that we could actually have that, have a new study done? Because a study done in 1998 or 1999 probably is not quite still relevant, because like, people brought up, there's new technology that's now happening, and so have we done a study? I don't think we have, have we? I don't think we have. And I mean, I think that's what we need to do, because if we're going to make the decision, I mean, and whether it is put back some and not all, put them in different locations, put them in different distances from each other, so that everybody feels like they're getting coverage, but not just going over, you know, ski moguls, ski moguls all, every time they drive out of their driveway. I just think that that should be something that we should consider, because it seems like we'd be able to make a more effective and diligent decision if we had some more information.
You know, Ms. Smith, I think you're right. Let me ask Mr. Bischoff a question, a couple of questions here. One, can we contact Mr. Skipper and see how quickly we could get a study done? Because I think, with all due respect to our resources within the city, I think we need that third party to, A, tell us how much it would cost, so that we can certainly get financing involved, but B, find out how quickly that could be done. Sure. Well, we've got options. Okay, so if you will pursue those for us, I would request that for the sake of the council, number one. Number two, please meet with Chief Ross, or give him a phone call, and tell him we really want some aggressive, and I'm telling you, residents, that when Chief Ross puts forth aggressive enforcement, some folks are going to get some tickets that they're not going to be very happy about, but his people will make an impact on what's happening on that road. And word of mouth gets out pretty quickly. So, you know, as a grandfather of 14, the last thing I want to see is any of your children, or anyone else for that matter, hurt or harmed in any way on that street. And I really, again, with all due respect to Forest Brook residents, I'm going to listen to the folks that live on Berry Road first, because you're all the ones that have to deal with it on a daily basis. And Jerry, I understand, you know, sometimes you're not going to like it, man, but anyway, Mr. White?
In addition, when you're talking to the chief, Mr. Bischoff, if he thinks it's a good idea, if we still have that big white box that shows the speed you're going, that might be a good idea as well.
That's really effective. I mean, again-
It works on Salter.
On Salter Road, it works really well, when I'm going to see family members there.
And Salter, it's permanent, right?
It is.
So, I mean, I wonder if that could be a consideration, as well as, I hesitate to ask this question, because I'm sure everybody's been doing this, but I'm sure there's been studies of road diet, or roundabouts, or are there no opportunities for any of these alternatives?
Yeah, that's sidewalk.
Sidewalks? I think that's one we need to-
That's why we need, we need the study.
Well, but Skipper won't be doing that. Skipper will just be-
Whomever would be the ones that would be appropriate.
I think we could ask him to do that.
Okay, great, 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 thank you.
Excuse me, one at a time. We'll seek expert advice. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo what Mr. Wright had to say. That was, I've been trying to catch your eye, but you've been looking down the other way. To say that very thing, my position on speed humps is quite clear. I've made that very clear to everyone on the council. But let me clarify it for the audience, and the reasons behind my position, if I might, because it's been suggested that, first, I live in Forest Brook. I live in Forest Brook. I did not originate this item. Forest Brook did not originate this item. This was something Counselor McCluskey brought to public safety. I'm not sure, I'm not sure why he decided to bring it. And I believe the reason, and staff can correct me, I believe the reason why there are two speed humps, and then no more, was because when he decided to bring it to committee, two of them had been completed, and so they stopped right there. It wasn't, oh, these two speed humps are in an ideal location if we're going to have two speed humps. So, just to clarify that, because I'm trying to address specific things that were said, so people have some clarification. But to make my position clear, this isn't just about speed humps being annoying. I believe in traffic calming measures. I think we should take them very, very seriously. I believe there are targeted areas that, in our city, could benefit from more traffic calming measures. It just so happens that I don't think speed bumps and speed humps are the right alternative for traffic calming. I respect the fact that folks who live on Berry don't agree with that position, but to me, speed humps and speed bumps are just ways to artificially create an environment on a road that it seems to me, we go to an awful lot of trouble paying people to pave to get rid of in the first place. I don't think potholes are the solution to slowing people down. I don't think speed bumps are the solution to slowing people down. I think there are other traffic calming measures we need to look at, and so I would echo what Counselor Wright had to say. If we're going to look at this, I think we need to look at it comprehensively. I think we need to look at what other traffic calming measures may make sense, to respectfully disagree with one of the people who spoke to the traffic circle, at least on one side of the traffic circle. You do have to slow down when you go through that traffic circle. At least I do. I can't go through it going any more than about 15 miles an hour. Now, on the other side, you can blow through, because the thing, for whatever reason, was displaced to one side of the road. That made no sense. I don't know why it was designed that way. I'm sure there were reasons at the time. But the point being, there are other alternatives. I think we need to look at the other alternatives. And we may be right back in two months, three months, saying, speed humps the only alternative that we're even going to consider. But, until we've done that kind of reflective, soul-searching about what the best form of traffic calming is, and not just the easiest form of traffic calming, I don't think we've given the question as much attention as we should have. But I did want to make the point that, at least this Forest Brook resident does not adjoin to the speed humps just because they annoy me or bounce my car. I've never spilled coffee on myself or anything else as a consequence of the speed humps. It's merely that, and as a rule, I do not believe in speed humps, period. I don't think they're the best way to slow traffic. I think there are other things we should look at first. So I just wanted to clarify that, and I wanted to echo the idea that we should look at other traffic calming measures, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Again, as a reminder, we will solve the speed limit signs as quickly as possible, yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, yes?
Okay, yeah, I was on the council in 98. Hard to believe that. But, yeah, we had Mr. Galliano, who was our engineering, head of engineering at the time, and it was a long process, led by Mr. Chambers, who lived on Berry Road, who pushed for it. And there were a lot of hoops. I don't recall the traffic study being paid by the street, but maybe that was the case. I didn't remember that. But I think what we're looking for really is just a review. Now that we have the road paved, it's always good just to review, because I remember even Mr. Chambers commenting to me after they went up, he had no idea there would be that many. And so it's really just, let's look at it, and if we end up deciding to move forward, to put them back up, can there be just a fewer number, you know, as a possibility? And the traffic study will say that. That's really the only traffic study we've had, that Mr. Galliano had performed, which was six months afterwards, which the ordinance required. But I think it's good to just kind of look at that, and I've sent an email to you, Mr. Burgett, from Mr. McCluskey, to distribute to the council, and he basically is saying the same thing. He brought it forth, just because it was an opportunity to look and review. We did review sidewalks, and there was not enough room at all for sidewalks. Remember, we looked at that. So, we'd love to put sidewalks, but there's really just not the right way that's available to safely put sidewalks. So, that's all I have. I would like to send it back to public safety, to review the traffic study when it comes back, so that we can kind of work on it together. But I think it's helpful to have the public hearing as we did tonight.
I agree. Ms. Kendrick, we'll keep this on the agenda, but we won't read the ordinance tonight, okay? Can we do that?
There's no ordinance.
Okay, good.
There was no ordinance. Because we haven't made a change yet.
We'll refer it back to public safety, okay? Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, next item. 070618, public hearing set for tonight, for consideration of a sign variance. It's 76 Green Springs Highway. Report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith?
Yes, the committee met last week and voted 4 to 0 to refer the item back to the full council, without recommendation pending the public hearing set for tonight. The motion made by Mr. McCluskey, seconded by Mr. Higginbotham, and again, 4 to 0. And I believe Mr. DeVore is here.
All right, good. All right, let's open this public hearing. Mr. Cobb?
Yes, is Mr. DeVore here?
I thought that was him. I'm sorry.
All right.
The answer is no.
I got a phone call this week that said they had changed their request, and the current sign does not need a variance, the one that came in to me this week. I mean, not this week, last Thursday, excuse me. Forget where I am. So anyway, they were going to go with, they had originally requested two signs, and there was a size issue, and they redid, they're going to redo it from the building. This is the old Salvation Army building on Green Springs. And so now they're going to have one side on the sign, and it came in at 48 square feet. They're allowed 50, so life is good. And I would ask to drop this.
Great.
Second?
Thank you.
Wait, we're still in a public hearing, so hold on just a second. We'll take that motion and just see, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? If not, the public hearing is closed now. Go. Motion for Mr. Higginbotham, second for Ms. Waltney? Sorry. Any further discussion? If there is not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And it is dropped. Okay.
Now, 08-06-18, public hearing set for July 23, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of the preliminary development plans submitted by applicant Charles Kessler with CADCO LLC for owner Charles Kessler, Bennett Ashley McCullers, and Albert Evans for 1800 through 1808 Salter Road and 18, 809, 800 through, 808 Salter Road and 809 Carr Avenue to develop a 12-lot subdivision. And that, we will carry this over until the public hearing of July 23, 2018. 09-06-18, public hearing set for July 23, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of the rezoning application of Charles Kessler CADCO LLC to rezone 800 through 808 Salter Road and 809 Carr Avenue from NPD to RPD 1 to develop a 12-lot subdivision. And again, we will carry this over till July 23, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. All right, 10-6-18, public hearing set for July 9 at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of condemning a house at the following address, 101 Ventura Avenue, requested by Wyatt Pugh, and that is set. 11-06-18, public hearing set for July 9, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of condemning a house at 2916th Avenue South, and that is set. 12-06-18, public hearing set for July 9 at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of condemning a house at 1602 Ridge Road, and that is set. 13-06-18, public hearing set for July 9, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of condemning a house at 28 Edge Hill Road, and that is set. Any questions about any of those items? Good. 15-06-18, public hearing set for tonight to consider declaring the property located at 260 Oxmore Road a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750, excessive growth, and ordinance number 1098 litter. Report from Mr. Cook.
Yes. This is the current, this property is a current roadway end property located at 260 Oxmore Road. Currently, it's vacant. The property is owned by ADMA Incorporated with a mailing address of 3547 East Street, Vestavia, Alabama. The property was posted and certified letters mailed out on May the 11th for violations of excessive growth and litter. The excessive growth violation had a date of May 22 to come into compliance. The litter violation had a date of May 28 to come into compliance. On May 14, Mr. Patel emailed me informing me he had seen the sign posted on the property and that he would be taking care of the grass when the landscaper got back in town the following week. I responded to his email informing him that not only the grass needed to be cut, but also the shrubbery needed attention as well, and that, and that I mailed him a letter informing him of the violations. Within the next week, the grass was cut, but nothing done to address the shrubbery. I waited hoping that this would soon be addressed as well. Several weeks passed, and nothing was done to the shrubbery. In the meantime, the grass has grown back to a height again to be in violation. I had no choice but to ask the council set a public hearing. The date is tonight. I once again posted the property for the public hearing as well as mailed notice to the property owner on June 24. As of this afternoon, the litter has been cleaned up, removed from the property, the grass has been cut, and some shrubbery issues are getting addressed, but not yet fully in compliance.
So, Mr. Cook, what would be your recommendation?
Kind of like, see what the public hearing, what the public may have to say.
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
No problem at all. I would remind anyone who wants to speak to this item, please register with your name and your address with Mr. Burgett first. And I'm going to ask anyone who would like to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes. And with that, thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this item? Oh, let's open the public hearing first. Sorry. Now, anyone want to speak to this item? Sir, again, I'm sorry, please register your name and...
You've got the pictures in front of you, kind of the before and after. Yes.
We do. I would encourage the council to look at all the photographs that are in front of them as well as what Brian posted on the monitors. Your name is?
Sean. My name is Mike Patel.
Yes, sir, Mr. Patel.
I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Before I do that, I want to explain. So, we did get the grass cut when I emailed them. We got it cut again today, got the litter picked up. I never received anything in the mail from Mr. Cook. He knows, he's aware of that. And he emailed me the letter last Thursday, and we got it, and our landscaper was supposed to come to our property last Monday. His truck broke down. We've already paid him for the services, which he completed today. And we are, we addressed all the bushes, the litter on the property, the grass, the weeds, everything.
All right. If I can, let me ask you a couple of questions, Mr. Patel. And again, all we're interested in is, is having the landscape and the litter being a non-issue, and I hope you can appreciate that.
I need a quick...
No, just a statement. All we're interested in is the, the landscaping being maintained and the litter being nonexistent. Well, I think part of the challenge may be that y'all may have one definition of what maintained is, and we may perhaps have another definition of what it is. Again, Mr. Cook and I have not had a conversation about this at all. Having said that, I have observed the property. So, how, do you, does your landscaper have a commitment from y'all on a regular maintenance plan?
Yes, yes. By the month.
Which is what?
By the month, every month, he comes to the property, cuts the grass, weeds, and maintains the property.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Mr. Jones?
Have the shrubs been taken care of? I'm confused on this last, what you, a picture you took today, the, the grass has been cut. Have the shrubs, you said they've, have they been taken care of?
No, sir.
Okay, so...
We have volunteers that have grown up, food and shrubbery, and it's now exceeding the height of the shrubbery.
Okay, so, my, my question is, why was that not taken care of?
Okay, well, in the email that he sent me, he says it needs attention. He's never, he is not being specific to what he would like to have done. If you would meet me at my property and actually take the time to show me what he's exactly looking for, I can get it done. But in the email, if it just says it needs attention, that's not being very specific. I would need more specific details of what he wants to be done. As far as I'm concerned, from today, he, he maintained the bushes by trimming them from the sides and everything. I can, I can continue to do more, but he needs to tell me exactly what he would like to get done. It's not probable if he can just talk to me about it.
Ms. Smith?
I can tell you, that sign should be visible, so whatever's surrounding that sign needs to come down. The...
Look at the tree, is it?
That's from today. And then, there's a sign behind that tree. Yes.
Okay.
That, that needs to, yeah, that should all be cut down low.
They need to cut that.
Yeah, and then on the, I think the other part was this, the shrubbery line, there's trees growing up through the shepherries, so those need to be, temporary, just like...
We need trees, and we didn't know what Mr. Cook expecting.
Right, so I think...
All this attention, so we didn't know, but we do cut this line.
Yeah, and then, and, and when he does cut it down, I wouldn't tell him to pick it up because it looks like somewhere where he cut, he just sort of left the cuttings there.
We need to pile up on the side of the road.
Okay.
Right, for him to pick it up. I can show you the photograph.
Okay. All right. I'll tell you that's probably the biggest...
Did Ms. Smith communicate that effectively? I'm just asking, did, did, did Ms. Smith communicate what our expectations would be effectively? Good.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
No, you're welcome to, no.
Here.
Here, go ahead. Let her mark hers.
Okay, that's the, okay, perfect, perfect.
All right, good. Mr. Wolverton?
So, just a, a couple of quick things. Mr. Cook, when you noticed the property, were they, were they, are they given some sort of objective data for what the ordinance says and what's required of them?
Well, yes, we helped you in the specifics, cut that tree and not just that one.
Right, but just generally speaking?
The shrubbery that we're speaking of, when the hotel was open, it never got into the situation.
Okay.
They maintained it then. I don't see why they can't maintain it equally today as they did then.
Okay. And then, secondly, just, just my general observation, this time of the year, I'm not sure that a month, a monthly, you know, manicure is, is enough to adequately keep things within specs. And as a resident of West Homewood, I, you know, would definitely like to see everything stay, stay within code.
And I would respectfully agree with what Mr. Wolverton just said, that I, I grew up in a household where my grandfather owned a landscaping company for 34 years. I know a good bit about that, and I would say to you that once a month is, in the months of May through September are really not going to be...
Well, in the summer, we call it often, but when winter comes, it doesn't need that, so we slow that down.
I agree. No, 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 I agree with you, sir. Once a month probably is, is more than it needs in the winter. But I would say to you that, that every other week, in my best judgment, would be, would be a need.
In the summer.
Y'all are welcome to tell me. I don't know what I'm told, man.
I'm not going to tell you that, but I got a question.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Mr. Cook, is that a shrub growing out of the parking lot?
That is, I believe, a willow tree.
Growing out of the parking lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Was that included on your list, that stuff shouldn't be growing out of the parking lot?
I don't know that not...
It's in that same packet.
Yeah, here, it is. It's one of the...
But if stuff's growing out of the parking lot, it needs to go.
I didn't, I didn't know that.
It's actually not there anymore.
Very observant, Mr. White.
I could have saved it more. Well, here it is.
No, but that's an example, Mr. Patel.
That's an example. It's not growing out of the parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that actually was taken care of today, so...
Okay, again...
Another thing, another thing, also, the rain, this random rain that's been coming through, it's, it's like, we had to stop today, and he had to wait for a little bit until it actually cleared up. So, this random rain's been a problem too, so, I mean, but we are addressing the problem.
Well, you don't want to be here, we don't want to have you here again, so let, let's all agree that, that A, in the summer months, more frequent cutting is needed, B, let's maintain it as if the property was open, and we won't have these conversations again. So, I think, well, let's see if there's anyone else who wants to speak to this item. But I, I think there's a, a way to go forward, okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this item? Please. If there's not, we'll close the public hearing. Here's what, here's what I would recommend. Let's carry this over and give these gentlemen an opportunity to get it where it should be sometime between now and July 9, which is our next meeting. And if Mr. Cook reports out that, that, you know, he has another set of pictures for us to look at, and we're pleased with that, then we'll go from there, okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can, can I just clarify one, one other thing with Mr. Cook? I'm assuming that you weren't able, I mean, it's a fairly large property, correct? So, I'm assuming that you probably weren't able to take pictures of absolutely everything that's out of compliance. So, I just want to clarify...
I don't know what you want to, yes, I see that.
Yeah, but, but I just want to be clear to the property owners that this is just an example. This does not, this does not include everything that needs to be cleaned up on the property.
And I, and I would suggest that, that, I think they, hopefully, they will understand what needs to be done. Go in there and do it, then call me and then ask me, are we now in compliance, rather than beating them and trying to point out every little thing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Patel.
Couple of things. We'd like to get, we've called his office number quite a while, and we just don't get a call back. If we'd like your cell phone number, it'd be great. In addition to that, the word include, does that include everybody else that has a business in Homewood that is open, and if not, it's closed, because they have high grass and litter? And I'm not trying to throw anybody else under the bus, I'm just making sure everything is equal and fair. So, that being said, does that just only apply to us, or does that apply for everybody else?
It applies to everyone.
Mr. Patel, I can assure you, it does apply to everyone, and our intent is not to target or to single out any individual, including y'all. But there is a point, well, first, you do have a very large piece of property. So, what occurs on that property is therefore noticeable. Two, because it is closed, it tends to attract more attention, and that's human nature. But I would, again, say to you that, you know, there's an opportunity here, rather than, you know, passing a resolution that says you're out of compliance, we're willing to be flexible until July 9. And that is something, and I hope you respect that. Yes?
So, we like to say that everybody else complies. We have seen, and we have sent this photograph to mail, across from our hotel, where we cut the grass today. See, our grass is grown 15 inches, and how come the seers have not given up any notice? And Mr. Shader next door to us, in the corner, I made one damn Mr. Scott, Cook, you're going like that there. And he says, "Sir, this grass is growing, it never cost that. It's, it's like now it's trailing, so what they do on the Shader's side, some area." Mr. Cook said, "I have not seen that grass. When I see it, I will notify them." Has not done yet. I think we've been by target on a rational basis ourselves. We don't mind complying. We've been complying all the time, sir. Every time we comply. We complied every time before, and we still comply every time.
Why do we have to, why do we have to give you notice and repeat it?
It's only been three times in four years. That's not repeatedly.
That is three times, gentlemen.
Well, I have a binder here, right here, in front of me. Very lo, hang on, Ted.
If you want to make a complaint, please do.
Well, let me, let me just say this real quick. So, here's the thing. We're not, we're not saying we don't want to comply. We are going to comply. We're going to bring our property into, we have been complying. It's been closed for four years. We've never had a public hearing in the four years that we've been closed. This is the first time. So, we are going to comply. I want to make that very well clear to all of you up here. So, don't want to make that misconstrued or anything. But I've got a binder here. I did this, I took these pictures in one day, in two hours, okay, of properties that are not in operation right now, and some that are in operation, that have grass and weeds and excessive growth and litter. I mean, our neighbors have litter on the backside of their property. They've got a Toyota Tundra with a flat tire back there with trash all behind it. I mean, I'm not, again, not trying to throw anybody under the bus, I'm just simply concerned, like, we don't mind complying. we don't mind complying, we're going to do what we have to do, but we would like to see these other people come into compliance as well. It's just not, it's only fair.
Well, let me say this to you...
That only enhances the city of Homewood itself, if everybody's doing so.
But we appreciate your interest in that, because that's all we all are here for. But to be honest with you, this process is complaint-driven. If you have a complaint, make it to Mr. Cook and we'll address it.
We, we absolutely will, for anyone else, hold on.
If others hadn't, and if we perceive complaints wherever it will address it, exactly the same way.
But when we do bring it to his attention, he says he's going to look at it and do anything.
...that's been cited for weeds in, in the last four years in Homewood, I can assure you. So any basis, the statement that you're being singled out is just not factually correct?
Waiting is correct, sir. Waiting is correct.
Well, I can't change your mind, I can just tell you routinely, we have complaints and we address them.
I do show the photograph right now, sir, having a wall, Mr. Cook, he missed CS across the street, his grass is tall, how come he missed that? We could look in hours, he can see that. Mr. Shader's grass is that big, he can see that. And I pointed out Mr. Cook, and he said, "I have not seen that one." When I see it, I don't fight it. That's exactly what I want.
Well...
Mr. President?
Mr. Patel?
I'm glad.
Do you know that he...
No, he has not, it's been...
It's been like that for years.
Somebody like to come and look at it. Somebody like to...
I mean, if we zoom in on the camera, wherever the camera...
Gentlemen, we, we can't do that.
He's been singled out on a rational basis because...
Well, Mr. Patel, I'm going to cut you off right here, for two reasons. Stop, stop!
It was a public hearing, it's a meeting.
Mr. Patel, I, I said in, I said in the beginning that everyone that wanted to speak would have three minutes. You've had much, much more than three minutes. Having said that, we're offering, you know, as, as Mr. Kendrick wisely said, "I can't change your opinion, I'm also not going to try to influence your perspective." You have your perspective, and you're entitled to that as a human being. But what I can do for you is let you have this opportunity to get in compliance. Also, I can say to you, as Mr. Kendrick said, if you've got a complaint against another property, please, please offer that, and we'll, we'll respect that, we'll respond to that. I, as a, a former property owner of an un-improved property, had complaints, and I had to respond to that, because that's, that's what we do. Now, if we go any further with this, then this would be a contentious situation, I don't want that, I don't think y'all do either. That's not a threat. That's having given you the length of time that you were more than entitled to, to speak to this issue. Now, if you've got a final comment, you're welcome to make it.
Sure. Okay, so, back to what we were saying, again, fully going to comply, we're going to take care of the issues, not a problem, okay? Again, from what my father's saying, we're simply just saying that, if you want us to tell Mr. Cook about the complaints, we've already done that. We've told him, we've explained to him, my father's told him, we've pointed out the grass, there's, our neighbors next door has a piece of property right there by the ramp, that our, our sign used to be on, okay? And that sign's no longer there anymore, and it's between our property and Mr. Shader's, but it belongs to Mr. Shader. And there's grass growing up, there's weed and like, like small little trees, that's not for us to take care of, that's for Mr. Shader to take care of. And when we point that out to Mr. Cook, his response is, "When I see it, I'll address it," but it's still there. I come to that property almost three or four times a week, just observe, make sure things are okay. I notice that. I don't say anything, I don't live in Homewood, so it's not, it's not in my prerogative to come out here and complain about other people. I'm trying to, I'm just maintaining my property, and I'm out.
Thank you.
I mean, but here's my thing, if I can, if I can send him all these pictures by email, can I copy all of you guys on it, so at least something can be done about it?
Yes.
Our, our email addresses are on the City of Homewood website, and you're certainly welcome to do that. And I can assure you that, that Mr. Cook will give other properties every consideration, we'll go from there, okay? Thank you, I appreciate it. Yes, look, I think the proper thing for me to do would be to keep this open until July 9th, and we'll go from there, okay?
Could you, could you repeat that? Could you repeat that? I didn't hear that.
I can reopen it and continue it, okay? Thank you.
Could you repeat that, like, last statement? Could you repeat that last statement? I didn't hear it.
We will reopen it and continue it, until July 9th, okay? Thank you. Thank you. All right, next item, 020618, request for consideration to replace administration position with revenue examiner position grade 18, step 10, Robert Burgett and Mayor McLeire. Report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I'm going to, I, I was not able to make the last meeting, so Mrs. Smith is going to report out Finance tonight.
Yes. The committee met last Monday, and we voted four to zero to recommend approving this change for this, for the department. And motion was made by Mr. Wright, seconded by Mr. Thames, and four to zero to approve that.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Do we have any other questions or comments? If there are not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is Resolution 1886, and that is approved, okay?
Is that the first?
140618, request to set a public hearing for consideration to adopt changes to the zoning ordinances. Homewood Planning Commission, Greg Cobb, our BEZ folks, and a report from PND, Mr. Thames.
Bear with me.
No problem. We can work with those who have had surgery recently.
I do not have the minutes.
It's okay.
...of that meeting, but as I recall, Mr. Cobb provided us with a list of proposed changes from the Planning Commission, some were housekeeping, I would think that the main change would be reverting to the old way of calculating front, set, back, some corner lots, to look at it as if it was two front yards. Mr. Cobb can sure to elaborate at the public hearing.
And you, the, the committee's decision was?
To approve.
Okay. All right, thank you. We will set that public hearing for August 13th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, okay? All right, 030518, request for consideration of an ABC, 020, Restaurant Retail Liquor for Magic City Suite Italian Ice, LLC DBA Magic City Suite Ice, located at 715 Oak Grove Road. This was requested by Melody Salter, our city clerk. Who would be doing the report from Public Safety?
Uh, Mr. Thames.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir. Hold my other setup. All right, the committee met, voted four to zero, recommending having no objections, pending letters of no objection from police and fire.
All right, do we know whether we have those letters or not?
I have not heard of it.
We do not have those letters.
We do not have those letters, so we will carry this over for at least one meeting, but is there a way to get in touch, Mr. Bischoff, is there a way to get in touch with these folks and let them know?
Hi, Bob.
Mr. Wolverton's going to handle it, thank you.
I've been talking to them, I think they've just been busy with the summer.
Well, I mean, I understand.
Yes, I know. Tried to explain to them, they're all in charge of the...
All right. Okay, 210518, request for consideration for crosswalks and our safety striping at the three-way intersection of Edgeline Place and Forest Drive, requested by Patrick McCloskey. Report from Public Safety, Mr. Thames.
Committee met, voted four to zero, recommending approval, motion by, seconded by Mr. Wyatt.
Okay, thank you. First reading, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir. Provide for this motion, pedestrian crosswalks across Forest Drive, the western intersection of Edgeline Place, and across Edgeline Place at the intersection of Forest Drive, and here, here are names, City Council's policies, Chief Police and Director of the Forest Crosswalk, across Forest Drive, the western side of the intersection of Forest Drive, and here, Chief Police Director of the Forest, pedestrian crosswalks across Edgeline Place, intersection of Edgeline Place and Forest Drive, section three, all driving, most vehicles, time out of code, children, the open distance, located within the crosswalk, and above, before the person violates the provision of this order, so these, these provided by section one, as head of the Code of Orders, section eight, three orders, parts of orders, contract, and appeal, by the severe section six, in order to be in a constitutionally valid court, comfort, protection, exception, section, does not affect the other provisions, or parts of sections of this order, since section seven, that orders will come affected.
So this will be ordinance 2703, Chair would welcome a motion and a second for adoption. Motion by Mr. Jones, seconded by Ms. Smith. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so 2703 is passed unanimously.
Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes.
I need to say that, on the unanimous consent, I did not call Mr. McCloskey's name, but he is absent.
Right, okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. 050618, request to consider creation of a social media policy for the City of Homewood, requested by Mr. Higginbotham. Report from Special Issues, please, ma'am.
Um, yes, the committee met last week and voted four to zero to recommend approving the creation of a city social media policy, and I want to thank Mr. Higginbotham for bringing this to the committee and to the council. He's done a lot of work on that. We, Mr. Higginbotham actually made the motion, and was seconded by Mr. Gualtney, we voted four to zero, and we also talked about creating a subcommittee of staff members, Mr. Higginbotham, and I, who else, somebody from, yes, why don't you elaborate on who's going to be on the committee?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Smith. Our discussion was that this was really probably something that ultimately the mayor's office needed to handle, and we suggested that they just form an internal committee that would include various parties who might have relevant roles, obviously, someone from the mayor's office, probably Mr. Bischoff, and Mr. Kendrick, and someone possibly, right, the RIT people, and folks doing our Facebook pages, those kind of folks. I mean, I, I don't, we did not define who specifically would be on the committee, so whoever the mayor, you know, it'd be his, his choice, but our recommendation was just that he, he formed such a committee, and if they wanted council representation, I said I'd be happy to serve. If they don't, it won't be the end of the world, and that'll be one less meeting I have to go to. So, however they want to handle that, but that, that was the discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Kendrick, do we need a resolution for this?
I think the minutes could reflect the, since it just makes a recommendation to the council.
All right, well, the recommendation is made then, and thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Let me go on record as saying, we, we appreciate very much you bringing this to our attention, okay? So we will make that happen. 040618, request for consideration to adopt stormwater management ordinances, which there are several. Request by Greg Cobb, report from Public Works.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. The committee met, and after discussion, voted five to zero to recommend approval of the ordinances with one change, and the motion was approved with that one change by Counselor Gualtney, and seconded by Counselor McCloskey, and it voted five to zero to recommend approval.
All right, so that is our motion. Mr. Cobb, do you have any comments?
No, no, sir, if y'all comfortable with it. I, I missed the meeting last week, and I just came up here to answer your question, if, if you have them.
Okay, well, don't get away, I need your help on the last item, unfortunately, so...
Oh, I won't leave you. We got that last one.
I understand. All right, with that, Mr. Kendrick, let's have the reading.
Yes, sir, there are actually three ordinances that I need to...
Can you, can, is there a way to summarize them, or?
Yes, sir, I'm going to do my best.
Thank you.
I'm going to be tolerant, so I can reduce the problems, we'll be adopting these.
Thank you.
Firstly, the ordinance to regulate erosion and sediment control, Article One, the definition and section, Article Two, deals with installation, Article Three, deals with location, Article Four, deals with exclusions, include portions of the, as far as I would, Article Five, deals with BPM approval requirements, and design and performance standards, Article Six, deals with monitoring and, Article Seven, deals with enforcement, Article Eight, deals with dissonance, revision of the orders, since the orders will be, may be adopted in the time of adoption by the city council. These need to be separately adopted, so I would propose to the council, whether considering, or...
All right.
Orders to regulate erosion and sediment control, which we, previously drafted and disseminated, everyone, in this committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. So for the first ordinance, the Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, seconded by Mr. Wyatt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so this is ordinance 2704. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Wyatt, second from Mr. Jones.
Was that Wyatt?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please, sir.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so that is a 10-0 approval of ordinance 2704. The next one, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir, this is an ordinance to regulate stormwater management illicit discharge. Section one deals with the definitions applicable to the ordinance. Section two deals with administration of this particular ordinance. Section three deals with illicit discharge prohibitions prohibited by the ordinance. Section four deals with the suspension of MS4 access permits. Section five deals with industrial, commercial, or construction activity discharges. Section six deals with the monitoring of discharges. Section seven deals with the requirements to prevent, control, and reduce stormwater pollution, pollutants by the use of best management practice. Section eight deals with water course protection. Section nine deals with notification of spills. Section 10 deals with enforcement and abatement of the ordinance. Section 11 deals with the miscellaneous provisions, including the provisions that the ordinance will become effective upon adoption by the city council or approval by the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Mr. Wyatt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so this will be ordinance 2705, and we would appreciate a motion and a second for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Wyatt, second from Ms. Smith. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so 2705 is adopted with a 10-0 vote. Third ordinance, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, sir, this is an ordinance to regulate stormwater management post-construction activities. Section one deals with the definition. Section two deals with administration of this ordinance. Section three deals with post-construction BPM design, and this is the section that the committee meeting that was discussed, where there were essentially additions made that the previous, addendum A would now be exhibit A, would be, I'll read the sections that were changed. The current post-construction management technical memorandum, exhibit A, details acceptable design and criteria meeting, the requirements of the current NPDES permit, and shall be the basis for the design and implementation of post-construction BPMs. Please, while this technical memorandum addresses stormwater detention and retention facilities, such practices alone may not achieve the level of post-construction stormwater required. The intent of the technical memorandum is to evaluate options to manage stormwater runoff and the best, to best protect water quality for the community. As such, the technical memorandum may be amended and re-adopted by the Stormwater Management Authority. The City of Homewood also reserves the right to make amendments to the design criteria as they apply to the SWM program. A copy of said current memorandum may be obtained from the Building, Engineering, and Zoning Department. The latest adopted technical memorandum shall prevail in all stormwater design. Section four, the, deals with the application requirements. Section five deals with enforcement and abatement activities. Section six deals with miscellaneous provisions, including the notices, notice, and the fact that the ordinance will become adopted upon, will be, become effective upon adoption by the city council and approval by the mayor, with exhibit A being the SWMA, MS4 program technical memorandum attached.
Thank you, sir. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Smith. Roll call.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so this will be ordinance 2706, and the Chair would appreciate a motion and a second for adoption.
So moved. Second.
Motion from Mr. Gualtney, second from Mr. Wyatt. Roll call.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, and ordinance 2706 is adopted 10-0. All right, next items, committee for referral agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for, motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from Ms. Smith. Any further discussion? There be none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is approved unanimously. Other new business, 280618, request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 507 Tamworth Lane. A public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth, put forth by Scott Cook. Public hearing is set for July 9th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, 290618. Request for consideration to set a public hearing to declare property located at 1801 Kensington Road, a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth, again put forth by Scott Cook. Again, the public hearing is set for July 9th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. 300618, request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 1649 28th Avenue South, a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1098 litter and ordinance 1310 open and unenclosed storage, again put forth by Scott Cook. And the public hearing is set for July 9th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. 310618, request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 1117 Hardwick Lane, a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinance 1098 litter and ordinance 1310 open and unenclosed storage. Again, this is set for July 9th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. Final item, or next to the final item tonight, 320618, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for period of June 11th, 2018 through June 24th, 2018. Mr. Jones, who studied those?
Mr. Higginbotham.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Last time to do it.
It is. That's, that's why I'm smiling, Mr. Chairman.
I thought so.
I've got a big smile on my face, because this was my last group. I only found one issue, a 36 cent discrepancy, which has been, has been corrected, so I would move approval of these items.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Higginbotham.
I'd second that.
We have a second from Mr. Jones. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Did somebody say they were opposed? No, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And so that will be 1887, is that correct, Mr. Kendrick? Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, last item, 350618, request for consideration for working in the city right-of-way at Homewood Preserve for a proposed Eagle Scout project put forth by Mr. Wyatt. Pew, Mr. Cobb, if you'll fill everyone in.
Yes, sir. Where you start the trail on the preserve, right off of South Lake Shore there by the high school, there's a little side ditch, and this is a bridge to go over that side ditch. It wouldn't be, but probably, I don't have design drawings on it, not more than three feet high, but it would have some length to it, and it's, it's an Eagle Scout project, which they pay for and they build, but it's gonna be in our right-of-way, so, or on our property. But I went out and looked at the side, it looks like a worthwhile project, let you go up the trail, let them go through the little ditch. I think of the drawing you have, there's a little miniature drawing on the paper.
Very miniature.
Very miniature, it is. But we don't have the design drawings yet. Wyatt and I have talked about it, even though it's a short bridge, we want some kind of structural detail on it, so that we know that, you know, you can build a little bridge like that, but we'll make sure that 10 people saw they want to jump around on it, it doesn't fall down. So we're gonna, we're gonna look at it real close from our building department to make sure it is structurally sound.
Sounds good. Any questions, Mr. Cobb? Mr. Jones?
Who is the candidate?
Unless it's in that email, I do not know.
It was not in the email, I'm sorry.
It came, Wyatt sent it to Mr. Limbaugh today, and then I brought it here tonight, because to try to expedite it so they could get started on their project. So if y'all can expedite that, it would be appreciated.
My, Mr. Jones, my recommendation would be if we were, if we were proposing to approve it, that it would be subject to the drawings at Mr. Cobb and Mr. Pew's satisfaction.
Right. Okay.
Yes.
I would, I would move for that, then.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Jones. Do we have a second? Second from Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Does that need to be a resolution, Mr. Kendrick? Well, I don't have one. No, I know, but you can create that for us.
It came late today, Mr. Kendrick.
We, we do sometimes. I have email, too. Just send it, copy me.
I can forward email to you.
Greg, where is it exactly?
You know, between the high school and Armory, there's a, closest tennis court area, there's a walking trail that goes up the side of the mountain, and it's, we called it a preserve many years ago. I know Mike remembers, it's a preserve, land preserve, that the city owns, that won't be built on, and there's some trails up in there. Hadn't been on it myself in years, but when I, when this thing just came up.
So it's up the hill from the trail?
It's off of, it's off of South Lake Shore that runs to the high school, in between the Armory and the high school. You'll, all you'll see is a little old sign, it's about this big, so tall, and there's nothing on it right yet, it's a frame for a sign to announce the walking trail, and you can see the path where people, you know.
It really does need a resolution, I'll prepare. I'm, thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
I'll send it to you.
No problem.
It was, it was probably sent to you probably about 2:00 this afternoon, I guess.
It was, and I had moved on to some other responsibilities, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, we appreciate it. All right, that is the end of our agenda. Mr. Bischoff, would you like to say anything on behalf of the mayor?
No, other than my thoughts about, other scout supervisor, scout, there you go. Blitz.
Blitz.
We warned the public before this transpired, did we not?
You know, put that tray.
Did you pick?
Thank you, Ted.
No, this is gonna type. Well, this is good. Mr. Gualtney?
I'll be brief. I just wanted to take a second to thank Brett and JJ, of course, and the mayor, representatives of the Homewood Police Department for coming out and meeting with the RCDC last Tuesday, Thursday, Tuesday. We had a good meeting with the neighbors and to address some concerns, so we appreciate other departments in the city showing their support and helping us solve some problems.
Absolutely. Mr. Thames, before we get your information, we, we didn't really make a final decision about having meetings Monday, committee meetings Monday evening. Given that it will be July the 2nd, do we have anyone who will not be available for committee meetings, besides Mr. Gualtney and Ms. Smith?
I'll be here, 5:00.
I'll be here, I'm sorry, what date is it? July 2nd?
July 2nd.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay, we will press on then. Yes, sir.
Finance at 5?
30 minutes.
30 minutes, okay. P and D at 5:30. Barry, do you know this historical item content?
Basically, they just want to come and do a presentation, just to kind, because they haven't been in front of the council before, so they just want to kind of talk about what it is, what they want to do, and it shouldn't take long.
15 minutes?
15 minutes, yes.
All right, so 5:30 to 5:45, P and D.
Thank you. Mr. Higginbotham?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a whole lot tonight.